We'll get the meeting started. I'd like to welcome you and thank you for coming on behalf of the Steering Committee and Village Board. We really appreciate you coming out on a less than ideal climate night, but I suppose it's better than it would have been a few days ago. Our purpose of the meeting tonight is really two-fold. We'd like to explain the Quality Community Demonstration process to you, what it means to Rouse's Point to have been selected as a quality community, and where we are in the process, where we go from here. And we would like to hear your comments, your input. Public input is just the key part of this process, and we want, right from the beginning, to try to reach as many residents as we can to hear what their ideas are as we go through this planning process. And so, we'll go through the information, and then after we fill you in, get to the public question and comment session. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to our trustee, John Huckrow, for introductions.
Thank you, Melissa. First thing that I'd like to say is my observation is that the front row was empty. It reminds me, in September of 1962, three unassuming college freshmen walked into Ron Lasage's math class. One of them happens to have just moved up here from Long Island. Gordon Hall needs about 14 feet tall. The other guy was named Gil Murray, and he was a little rough about that tall, and me in the middle, and we sat in the front row. Don't ever sit in the front row. That was a mistake we made. Welcome. Again, I'd like to ask the members of the Steering Committee if they would introduce themselves, so they might know who they are, and so that you will have a means of communicating with them as we move along from Saturday. Here with you, Sandy.
Okay, Sandra Kelly.
Mary Rastico.
Marcy.
Pete DeBarber, Middle East stuff.
Alan Kaufman.
Nick Baker.
Lisa, let's go.
Alan Kaufman.
Peter Baumdaher.
Thank you. These are the folks that will be acting on your behalf, so we want your input so that we can do the best job we can for doing it. Nothing's going to happen if you don't want it to happen, I'll tell you that right now. These people are very responsible. They were selected from various groups in the villages: the Historical Society, the Planning Committee, the Vitification Committee, and some members at large. They were selected by their own groups, and I think that the selections were very, very appropriate for what we were trying to do. Also with us tonight, of course, is the mayor on the camera that is not, Calvin Cashdy. That's the mayor, Jordan Rivers, over there. And our village administrator, I think many of you have probably met Phil Beharwah. And our representative at all, but he's in the Department of State, is with us. David McCloud, I'd ask him just to please say a word as to what his role is, if you would.
Well, thank you. My name is David McCloud. I'm with the New York State Department of State, the Division of Coastal Resources. That's what we see. The Department of State, the division has been handed the lead in the Quality Communities' initial efforts to coordinate state agency efforts with local government efforts towards revitalization. At this point, we're trying to get the agencies and the local governments together to, you know, bring to bear a focused effort toward revitalization. As Melissa so beautifully put it, instead of blindly looking for assistance from the state agencies, you know, hoping to find out what opportunities are available, we're going to bring the state agencies into the same room so that they all come together and discuss ways of focusing their efforts. It's not a funding program per se, there's no additional money, but what it does is bring these agencies together in a concerted effort, rather than all singly doing their own thing and hoping it all results in something beneficial. After a while, we expect that you will no longer need the Department of State's help unless we won't disappear, but what we want to do is build the local capacity to take over that effort in a couple of years so that you can bring all of the different players together to, in a concerted effort, continue the Quality Communities' revitalization with the process. Tonight, I'm just here to listen, and, you know, if on the odd chance I know something they don't, I might actually be able to answer questions.
Thank you. Our mayor does have a statement that he'd like to make, but this time you put it on. George?
I wish you people would come to our board meeting. This is a pleasure. We had a public hearing last time at Water, and there was nobody here. Last night, we made some corrections. As you well know, six years ago, Governor awarded us $200,000 for waterfront revitalization. We've been working six years to try to come to a head with this project. With that, the project has ended up going costing about $1.6 million. Of that, the village has committed to, and I made a statement in the December meeting, not correct, the village has committed to $122,000 plus in-kind services. What was put out was it's going to cost to raise your tax rate to $1.23. That was never the intention of the Village Board to raise your tax rate to $1.23. If we did, we might all of us get on a train and ride uptown. That would have been bonded over a period of years, so if there was an increase in tax rate, it would be minimal. And it was said it would only be done in one or two years. Last night, we passed a motion to put that on hold for six to 12 months. Does not mean the project stopped. We've got about a year of permitting process to do before we even see anything done. Corps of Engineers, SICER, several other things that have to be done before we even consider starting. So, you're not going to see anything in the budget or anything for at least another year. And if it does happen, that we have to put that money up front, it will be bonded, it will not be a one-shot deal. Raise your tax rate so nobody can bear it. That was never that intent. And with that, I hope you folks realize that one of our major projects is a railroad station, and I understand on this round of funding, we've got $5,000 in this round of funding that's paid to do the engineering, so I would like to see that move forward fast enough to get the engineers to see where we stand at that railroad station, how much it's going to cost us. We have the money there, it's just a matter of us getting together and going after it. With that, ask all the questions you can. These people have all the answers here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess that's it for me. I'll come back in a little while and talk about a couple of other things, but Melissa?
Thank you. You know, I realized I forgot to introduce myself. That's what happens when you throw up and move a total of, what, two miles away from you, from where you were when you were growing up. So, I'm Melissa McManus. For those of you who don't know, sorry about that. I'm just going to start off by asking for your patience. We are new at this process. The group of people that you see sitting here, we really have only just begun the process. We wanted to come to you as soon as we could, which means we may not have all the answers. Luckily, we have Mr. McCloud with us. He can fill in a lot of gaps, but if you could just bear with us as we start to go through this information, and please, everyone on the committee, feel free to jump in if there's anything you'd like to add as I go through. I'd like to start off by giving you the background on the Quality Community selection, and this is all something that we've kind of tried to come up to speed on from our Steering Committee. The Quality Community Initiative was begun '99, 2000, by Governor Pataki, and it was an effort to assist local communities in revitalization projects. There are other aspects of it, in terms of open space and so on, that don't apply so much to Rouse's Point, but for Rouse's Point's concern, it's very much about economic revitalization. And part of the Quality Community Initiative was to give a series of designations as what they call a demonstration community. So, what happened in 2001, our county legislator, Celine Hawke, brought the Secretary of State to Rouse's Point. His name is Randy Daniels, and he was taken on a tour of Rouse's Point. He was very impressed by what he saw here, obviously the natural beauty of the lakefront, which is pretty much unduplicated, I think, on Champlain, and the ongoing infrastructure improvements that the village has undertaken: the waterfront project, and the water sewer electric, all the things that have been going on in Rouse's Point. As a result of that visit, Rouse's Point was strongly encouraged to apply to become one of the demonstration communities, and in August of 2002, the Lieutenant Governor announced that Rouse's Point, along with Plattsburgh, had been selected as one of the 12 communities in Rouse's Point, or in New York State, as a demonstration community. The first part of that is really what we're entering now, and that's a planning process. Rouse's Point has received a $60,000 grant to do what is called a Main Street Revitalization Strategy and Action Plan, or the MSRS-NAP, as we finally call it. Don't let the name throw you because it doesn't just apply to Main Street. We've been told by Mr. McCloud that we can look at any area with commercial potential in the village. And what we're going to try to do is develop a strategy for what might be done in the future to help revitalize the downtown waterfront and any other promising areas. That $60,000, most of the money, is going to go toward hiring a consultant to come in and do a study of the current situation here in the village, any economic opportunities that might exist for businesses, so that we have recommendations from that consultant as to how we might want to proceed. And just, because I know this is always a concern, the village's cost in that, the matching share, was met by installation of the ornamental streetlights in the downtown and the repair work done on the village office facade. So, basically, in terms of a cash outlay, there's no new money that's had to go into this process. When I heard about this, I really, after spending years trying to get money for the village of Champlain, I really couldn't believe that someone would just hand you a check to do this kind of planning, but it's not too good to be true. It's really happening, and so that's the process that we're in. The Village Board, to facilitate public input in the process, has appointed our Steering Committee. We've been meeting since December, trying to gather information, understand the process. We are trying to reach out to the other quality communities to see what they're doing, how they're going through the process, look at ideas they might have so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, and that's still an ongoing process. But at this point, we really wanted to go to the public, and that's something the Village Board really wanted us to do, as soon as possible, to explain the process and solicit your comments. And so, this is the first of many public meetings. I really want to emphasize that, that we plan on coming back to the public at every step in the process. After the consultant gives us the study, in fact, even before they do the study, we're going to encourage them to meet with the residents, and then, once we have the study, we'll come back to the residents before we draft our own, no, maybe it's the Main Street Revitalization Strategy and Action Plan. If somebody can come up with a good acronym for that, I would really appreciate it.
How about you say "the plan"?
The plan. We'll now call it "the plan." All right, thank you. Being a demonstration community is different, substantially different, from anything that I was involved with in my experience in local government. And most of the state programs that I've seen, and I think most of us have seen, are kind of, you have a project you want done, you go to the state and say, will you fund it? You want to build a park, you want to fix your water system, you want to fix up your railroad station, you go out and you try to find a grant to do that. This is not what the Quality Community process is about, as Mr. McLeod has reminded us. It's not a funding program. It is not a source of untold dollars down the road. The money that we do have is for the planning process, so that we can figure out what we want to do, and then look at maybe how to achieve that. And the other component is really an attempt to give us one-stop shopping on the state level. The Quality Communities Task Force has set up individual task forces for each village. So, we have people from the Department of State, where Mr. McCloud works, Empire State Development Corporation, Parks and Recreation, Department of Transportation, who are going to become experts on Rouse's Point and be able to assist us in looking for perhaps monies out there to do whatever the village chooses to do, or maybe just for technical assistance and recommendations as the problem might proceed. And so, that's really, that's a huge asset. I haven't been in a position of being out there kind of looking for money. To have people who know us and are keeping an eye out for what might advance our interests is just a really exciting thing. And I looked at SUNY, which, of course, with our proximity to Plattsburgh, SUNY also is very much involved in this process and will offer us technical assistance. Okay. Just again, it's really essential for us to remember that even though the state is awarding grant money and the state stands ready to help us, this is a locally-driven process. The Steering Committee's goal is to develop a long-range plan that is supported by the community at large, by the residents, by the business owners, something that people feel will not only provide perhaps some economic development, but also enhance the quality of life for those of us who call Rouse's Point home. And I think both of those elements have to be looked at in the plan, because I think a lot of people feel that you don't just want to spend your money on wishful thinking for some business that might come in 10 years down the road. You want to do some things that the residents can enjoy, frankly, because. Okay, before we ask you for ideas about what to include in the plan, I thought I would give you just a quick look at what the state has recommended in terms of information that we gather. If you don't mind, back from my old teaching days, I have a handout, so. You can give my pass and this over. We're community members who've spoken to the Steering Committee, along with ideas the Village Board has, and we're going to sit down and try to focus the consultants as they do our study for us. Instead of saying, you know, "Bring us one of your boilerplate plans that you wrote for Virginia, a community of Virginia, or a community of Massachusetts," here's what we'd like you to take a look at here in the village. These are ideas that our residents have brought up, our business owners have brought up, things that they're concerned about. These things that you can look at now, the existing land use, land ownership, the buildings, the current buildings that we have, transportation systems, natural resources, they'll take a look at all those things, but they'll also take a look at the things that we direct them to. And what we plan to do next week is begin the process of putting this information together and doing what's called a request for proposals. That's basically to help wanted for consultants. We'll ask them to send us ideas on what they might do for Rouse's Point, and we'll list those down, just like you would with an applicant in a job process. Take the best three or five that we like, have the consultants come up, take them around the community, meet them, see how they operate, and then make a recommendation to the Village Board as to who we would like to hire. So, that's what will be happening. I expect that it'll take two, three months to do that, to get someone on board, and then they'll start the process of conducting the study. Okay? And after that, as I said, we'll bring it back to you for comment. I hope that that's been helpful. In addition to gathering the straight data that you see there, we'll be asking the consultants to do an analysis of what of the data that they do gather. As I said in the newspaper, I think the key thing is a realistic assessment of what would work here. Maybe we would like something, but maybe the economic, the market won't support it. So, what would be a logical direction for Rouse's Point to look if we do want to, say, diversify the businesses that are here, if we want to try to improve the utilization of the buildings we have downtown, if we want to do more with our waterfront? What's a good, you know, kind of, if you have betting money, where's a good place to put your money? That's what we're looking for from this professional consultant that's going to be working for us. But again, those recommendations come back to Rouse's Point. They come back to the Steering Committee, to the boards, to the public, and it's up to us what ends up in our plan, the plan. So, thank you very much. I'm going to turn things over to John Huckrow for the village perspective, and then we'll take questions and comments.
A little over two years ago, we were made aware that we had been selected as one of the 12 quality communities in New York State, and we didn't have a clue what they were talking about, except that we knew we were going to get millions and millions of dollars. Well, reality did set in after a while. However, we had been named one of the 12 quality communities in New York State, and as Melissa says, Randy Daniels, the Secretary of State, was brought here by Celine Hawke. They were old college friends, maintained a good friendship, and he decided this is the model for quality communities that he wanted to see in New York State, and that's why we got selected. It wasn't totally an accident that we were selected either. If you look at Rouse's Point compared to some other communities, we haven't been sitting around doing nothing. We've been doing things to make Rouse's Point a quality community. We've improved the appearance of downtown as much as we can without getting into private property, because we can't touch private property, but we have done the things that we can within a modest budget to make Rouse's Point a better working place to be, and a place that you can feel good about. We've got some ladies sitting here tonight that get a lot of dirt under their fingernails from the end of April until after Columbus Day, making sure that Rouse's Point stays a nice looking community. As far as the Village Board goes, and what we see coming out of this, is we see what you want is coming out of it. That's why I was asked to select a Steering Committee to make the decisions on what's going to happen in Rouse's Point. We do have to make, give final approval on it. We are accountable to you, but the decisions that are made, and then I'll say it, this group of people are going to make responsive decisions on what they want for Rouse's Point based on what you tell them you want for Rouse's Point, and that really is where the Village Board is coming from. We are not going to make the decisions contrary to those that this committee and you want. And that's really it, in a nutshell. Is it, Mr. Mayor?
That's why I put you in charge.
Wow. And that's it. So, I guess we'll move on to questions.
Thank you, John. And now, happily, my fellow board members used to say, I'm going to stop talking and listen to what you have to say. Questions? Maybe questions about the information we've given you. Could we start with that? Did I totally confuse you? Or can I explain anything about the process? Yes?
I've heard a lot about brownfield sites recently. Can you explain that? I know these go as relatively successful.
Well, I'm going to start, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. McCloud. A brownfield site, in my understanding, is an area that was once used in some sort of industrial or perhaps transportation use, so there's some concern sometimes about environmental contamination in that area. And I think that reclaiming those sites, and especially where they're within an urban area or within a community, has been a priority for the state of New York for both the economic development and environmental protection perspective. It's an area where, at least when I was involved in Champlain, there was always grant money out there. I don't know if that's still the case, but does that help?
Yeah. I heard from many guests today.
Any other questions?
Oh, come on.
Just a second. We haven't yet mentioned that we did receive another $23,000 grant maybe a month ago. We had absolutely no clue where the money came from or what it was to be used for, but it was an outright grant. We don't have to match anything on it, and in investigating, we found that it has to be broken down into three categories. $3,000 of it is to be used to send, to send members of our community to workshop training in New York City in March.
Albany.
In Albany.
Starts in March.
In March, and then later on, June, is it?
March, April.
March, April, yeah. I think there are two in June, one in April.
So, Melissa's going, and Phil's going to go on our behalf, and the reason that we're sending Phil versus one of the elected people is he's with us all the time, 40, 50, 60, 70 hours a week, he's working for the village, and we want him to be very aware of what's happening. $5,000 of it, we were told, will be able to be used for the engineering study on the railroad station that I think you were mentioning. The rest of the money will be used to work with the State University of New York in providing input into the process that we're going on. I forgot to mention that earlier.
I'm so glad you did, because I promised Mr. McCloud I would include that training concept, and I left it right out when I was talking, so thank you. Third part of the Quality Community program that I should have mentioned is that the state wants to leave us on our own, what are we, to almost 3,000 feet when we leave here? They really want to train people in the community to continue this kind of what we used to call self-help approach, where we will be able to pull in the state agencies that we need as we look toward enacting whatever plan we come up with. And that's the $3,000 for training, and that's really, again, to be able to have those resources without cost to go ahead and do the training. Any, yes, Dave?
No, you mentioned, and I agree, and I think most people agree, that the single most attract, largest attraction that the village has is its proximity to the lake and the vistas of the lake, the discussion of the development of this waterfront project, which has been going on for a few years now. I don't, we have three marinas in town, and I don't see any people involved with those marinas here.
Okay.
And it would seem to me that they would be a bit apart.
Let me put that as our first comment, and I think that's really a good point, is that we need to make a real effort to involve the marina owners in the process. Doug?
From a business, global business perspective, my interest is, revitalization is attracting more people into the community and more money from the private industry. Those, that industry is already doing some of that, that brings some people in.
Right, it's an excellent point. It really is, and I, hopefully, will be able to get people who are willing to come ahead and do this. I'm just going to jot these things down, so those of us who are in the room right now have a record. Mr. Beharwah, Phil, is a marvel with shorthand. He's taking it all down, so we'll have a record after we write this for him. By the way, Phil, I have dry erase. I spent the whole afternoon in terror. There was a regular magic marker there, and I vanished it to my purse. I'm not going to walk away with it, I hope, but I was so hurt, I was going to write with the wrong magic marker on the beautiful whiteboard. Other questions, comments, directions we should look in? This is really what we need. Another question? Yes. I'm relatively new up here, and I really wanted to know what is it that the village wants to be able to do? Can you give me any ideas of what it's been thrown in so far? You mean from the Village Board, in terms of what they would like to see happen? They've left it very open-ended in our meetings at the Steering Committee, that they would like to work toward what the residents want, and defer to the village on that.
That's, yeah, we've kept our own personal objectives, if you would, to ourselves until we hear what you want, because we don't want anything clouded by the fact that we happen to be sitting in those chairs, and we really want people to be willing to make decisions. You along with we are paying tax dollars to keep this community alive, and we want it reflected. Your wishes.
I think one of the things that they talked about, the consultants, what they may, we wouldn't have figured all this out, is doing public surveys, I don't know about door-to-door or handlings, but, you know, we need obviously more people to get involved, and that's one of the things, to get a wider view from the village out there, not just people sitting here today.
And actually, before you leave, anyone who would like to volunteer to be a part of any of those processes, the surveys and so on? Lisa, I'm glad you said her name, Lisa has obtained this really fantastic book. It's called, Oh, Say Can You See?, A Visual Awareness Tool for Communities, and it's put together by SUNY's Landscape Architecture Department, Scenic America, and Division of the National Park Service, and it's all about taking a look at your community. Some of it's with photographs, going out and taking snapshots, because we've talked in the Steering Committee, the difference in what you see when you sit and look at a photograph versus what you might see driving or walking by something. And so, if we had people who are willing to work on something like this, I think it would be a tremendous asset. be a tremendous asset. So if anyone does want to volunteer, I have the sheet, we can put your email, we can put your phone number down, and we'd really love to have that kind of help.
I think some of the things that we've talked about as a group, maybe that people ask me some questions, is the parking, do we need more parking downtown square? What can we do about that? Noise, we have a lot of traffic noise, life, what can we do? Those are the kind of things. Railroad station, we're all aware that the village has graciously acquired the railroad station for us, and now, if this is a way that we can get a museum, which I'm sure Donna would like, we all would like, and it would, you know, these are the things that we're looking at, and obviously we'd like your influence as well. Maybe, I'm sure I missed...
I think the museum of the railroad would be beautiful.
And, you know, Donna has a very nice display upstairs now in the village office, but it's upstairs in the village office, and we really need to get it so it's accessible to people and there's a lot more there, and, you know, she also has the Ross collection, which she'd like to expand. We need to, we've had somebody doing the past history, but we really need to do current history as well, because that's going to get away from us. And there's just a lot that, you know, can be done, we just need some input from the public, and they're not all going to happen, but hopefully some will.
Does anybody know about the Triangle of Excellence?
Quite a lot about it.
Two years ago, I was invited to attend this meeting, and at St. John's, Quebec, city of Bronkin and the city of Plattsburgh, it's called the Triangle. I'm not going to go into some of the funnies or the annex, but this has been going on for quite some time, and they've been meeting regularly. Unfortunately, everything in between these three cities has been left out. And the first meeting I attended up to St. John's, Quebec, with all these people, it was over 200 people in attendance, I said, all of a sudden I noticed signs going up in Ross's Point that there's a bike path. There's a designated bike route up Route 9B. Oh, yeah, we did that. I said, well, you know, it would have been nice to have talked to people at Ross's Point. I says, for instance, we have this project that we are working on, you know, I don't know what's going to happen with this waterfront. I said, I'd like to see that bike path turn from State Street or Montgomery Street and go down Montgomery Street and go that way instead of coming down this way. Oh, that's not a bad idea. So we are now part of that Triangle of Excellence, or whatever they want to call it, and hopefully we can get some input. Ended up, we did get some input with this, I don't know if you saw this sign.
Lake Champlain corridor, Lake Stilox pass, it's a chart.
Okay, let's right up at the top, Ross's Point. And we're part of this, this is, this is a I Love New York campaign, and this is supposedly, if it hasn't been done, it's going to be done, and it's about the Lake Champlain Canal or the Canal, Champlain Canal up through to Ross's Point to the Richelieu. And we are getting some advertisement out of it now. Our signs that are going on a waterfront are done by these people. They are here. Hopefully, we can, we can get some measles up so you can see what they're like.
Can I add something to that, George?
Yeah.
There is now a very important organization called CHART, in which I think you've also had some input, that, to which I am one, which I'm one of the founding members, and that is dedicated to what will happen in 2009 and 2014, when we have very important celebrations here in the Champlain Valley, and in the entire Lake Champlain corridor from the Richelieu all the way to Albany.
Are you talking about the 400th anniversary of Samuel D. Champlain?
Samuel D. Champlain, and the anniversary of the Battle of Plattsburgh.
That was brought up in our meeting.
Called 2009, 2014. What we are doing is beginning the planning now in 2004 for these two very important anniversaries, and this will tie in very, very well with the number of projects that will happen here.
Put that down, historical commemoration.
But it will not only be a historical commemoration, but a major tourism and economic. Mr. Howard, economic.
I heard mentioned here tonight about the noise problem. Two years ago, I was invited to a public hearing on the bypass highway. Some people in this room don't want to hear bypass highway. Some people do, but I think that's been going on for at least 40 years that I know of, if not more. Well, the United States government spent, two years ago, over a million dollars on this study to take that highway down, and I sat in that meeting, and I don't like being negative, but I'll tell you what, I sat in that meeting and did a very slow burn down in Plattsburgh, because the village of Ross's Point and its northern end was completely shunned. That has to go to Cumberland Head and build a new bridge across Cumberland Head, and I'm saying, hey, we got 400,000 trucks a year approximately going through our village. Why not do something to take care of that kind of, you know? And I'll tell you, I was shot down. It was like, oh, that's the northern end, we don't care.
Don't discourage one of our hopes, George.
No, but I'm just saying, that's, you know, that's the attitude, is you got to fight.
Is there any economic benefit to the village of Ross's Point whatsoever from those 400,000 trucks?
How many of them, you see them stop on Main Street?
Yeah, that's the point. That is such a, for me, I think that's been the most fascinating part of this process, and I know most of you, your roots here are very, very deep. I grew up literally, I, hearing about some of these things over 30 years ago around the kitchen table.
You're telling your agent you don't want to, do you?
No, well, it's too late for that right now. You know, these are things that have been discussed over kitchen tables and over barstools and all around Ross's Point for years and years, and would it be good to try to divert the truck traffic, or not? We might all have opinions, but we can get this consultant to give a professional evaluation of that. How will it affect our downtown businesses? Will it be a plus or will it be a minus? How would it affect trying to bring in additional economic development? And I think, if I read the steering committee rate, they're very open-minded in terms of just wanting to gather this information, wanting to see what someone outside has to say to us.
I think that could definitely make you feel better. Discussions like this were taking place over 60 years ago in my grandfather's liquor store. Now there isn't.
I wasn't there. But I was in, I was in that liquor store a little bit later, I remember.
They would discuss the bypass ideas inside and forth and so on.
I think a lot of people are concerned that with the truck traffic, you're going to take away the car traffic, and it's a legitimate concern.
Sure it is.
But I, what we have to think of as a community, if we're going to separate truck traffic, figure out a way to get cars to still come through.
An attraction.
An attraction. There are things, like we've talked about information centers, that could be one deal on this end of the village, or at the other end of the village, maybe a convenience station. So when they know when it comes to, well, do I take the truck, just skip over the bridge or to go through Ross's Point and see, see the lake, and, well, yeah, there's a place I can stop and get coffee, and it's a nice little spot, there's a convenience station. Signage can do a lot for you. So if we lose the trucks, maybe we can still keep the cars, but we have to study that.
And I absolutely agree.
See if any other community ever done anything like that. And that's why we don't need to say right off the bat, well, we don't want to, we don't want to give the trucks, we're going to get rid of everything. Not necessarily. We have to be open-minded about this and get ideas of maybe how to separate the traffic if the cars come in this way.
I can have sympathy for this baker, people living on that end of the town, but I don't understand what the problem with the truck is.
The biggest problem is noise.
Noise.
Danger. That can be a danger, but other communities have abated it. The major thing is the jake breaks on the trucks, and there are villages that have ordinances to prevent that from happening.
Is that the one when you walk?
It's not a problem, Peter, but it's not a problem, but try to enforce it.
They don't, they all don't do that.
You know, I think that, as it would show here, I think we're going to get people on both sides of that issue, probably right here in this room, with very strongly held opinions.
If you're on a main commercial street in a town, no matter what town you're in, I mean, some of that's to be expected.
Right.
I believe that that is also one of the attractions of Ross's Point, that we are the crossroads. If you're going to New England, you're pretty much going through Ross's Point, and I do have concerns about slowing some of the traffic down. And I do have truck drivers who come into our store, who make deliveries to us, who have said that they've come back with their family, that they, you know, that they're coming through.
Well, let me ask you this question, folks.
But one of the problems I have with the truck traffic downtown, you know, is related to the parking thing, you know, and it's hard to get into a parking space and things, which if some of the parking stuff was alleviated, perhaps some of the nuisance of the trucks wouldn't be as bad. I don't know about the residents, you know, on that end of Lake Street.
This afternoon, I could have killed all the truck drivers in this village. I got caught, you know, walking down the street.
Did you recover?
I got plastered from head to toe.
There was no truck driver around, so he came in the store and gave me hell.
I'm glad you stood up and took it. Let me throw this scenario out to you, folks, really. What happened to the village of Champlain when they took the trucks out? But what happened to outside of Champlain?
It wonderful.
It's growing, let's face it. I mean, we can't use Miramar Mall for, because that's a mall, but any business that wants to, where are they going? Where does that exit off that interstate? If you had an interstate that went across here, and you had an exit here, and you had the capability of building around that exit, you're going to get the same thing.
Bob, yes?
I want to get back to a piece we remarked about the jake breaks on the trucks. Just for an information, there is a law in New York State on the vehicle traffic that you can enforce jake breaks whether you have an ordinance or don't have an ordinance. There's also a federal law. The thing of it is, if we have an ordinance, then what happens is, if you ticket a truck driver, and let's say the fine is $500, the $500 stays within the village. If our local cops ticket a truck driver now, and let's say the fine is $500, we may only keep $10, and the rest will go to the state.
10%.
It's a percentage or it's number of dollars.
But that's...
But that is a law.
Let me, let me correct something.
In effect, I have it right here.
Yeah, but let me correct you something on that. The village of Ross's Point has adopted every single vehicle traffic law, so that when our local police write a ticket, money stays here. We have adopted them.
Well, then, if you've adopted it, then it's just a matter of enforcing it.
But that's, that was the word, enforcing.
Well, you have your police department to enforce it.
I got three police officers. How do you protect the people or have them on duty 24/7?
You don't have to.
And it's so...
All you need is a DB meter for $150, $200, handheld, 50 yards out of the road.
They've got them.
You'll get a half a dozen.
They've got them. Bob, they've got the meters, and they've gotten the truckers.
Well, you know, I think...
But I don't want to, this is an argument, and we don't need it.
No, I don't want to get into the discussion, but what I'm saying is, that's what, I'm just bringing out the fact of the law.
We have identified the truck traffic concerns, the noise, the concern about parking spaces as you're trying to park while you have those tractor trailers passing, concerns about loss of business if we were to move the truck traffic, and I think, again, that's the beauty of this process, is that it's very open-ended. We can, we don't even have to give these people a solution, A or B. We can say, here are the concerns in the community. What do you recommend? You know, what might we consider? Can we, can we solve this problem in a way perhaps we hadn't even thought about? Maybe there is middle ground. Of course, there's always the issue of expense, even if we decide we could do something. I remember my dad saying years ago, a million dollars a mile for interstate, and I bet it's a lot higher than that now. Excuse me, there's the cost, and that's something else that has to be factored in. So, excuse me, dear, all that is, you know, information we can present to our consultant. Any other comments? Excuse me.
Well, the boardwalk. Is that Ashton Stone?
Okay, in terms of this piece of...
It's not our concern.
The waterfront project? That is something that the Village Board had undertaken before the steering committee was created, and I think they can speak to you more about details of that project. My understanding is that the boardwalk is the phase three of the waterfront project. Grants have been applied for, but the funding is not secure, so I think that is somewhat open-ended because there aren't any monies in place. While it's not the purview of our committee, you know, exactly, I think trying to align the waterfront, downtown, economic revitalization, it's all things that we need to hear about, and we need feedback on.
If I may, if, I've only driven through here, you know, been around the boardwalk once, but, so I'm going to couch this in ifs and thens. Being a, basically a downtown core revitalization effort as opposed to strictly Main Street, any, any element that is essential to that downtown revitalization, I think, is really a purpose of this process, so it is felt that that area can be looked at, revisited, maybe if plans can be adjusted and improved through this process, then I think that's perfectly legitimate, that is something that...
Thank you for that. I think, I think that's good to know, because it gives...
We weren't aware of that.
...the ones in latitude in action that they might appreciate.
We were not...
I don't see why not. I mean, what I understand of what we're doing...
When Peter Welch got involved in this, and I'm going back six years now, and when the governor gave the $200,000 for waterfront revitalization, we kicked that thing around here for two years before we did a thing. Absolutely before we did a thing. We've asked for input, we asked for everything. We really had no idea what we were going to do with that money, and one individual come up and he said, well, why don't we make a boardwalk out of the state dock? And we're just saying, hey, that's an excellent idea. So that's what we went for, and we have approximately, I don't know, what, 70, 80,000 left of that grant, because we put the bathrooms up on the...
About 15,000.
On the boat launch area, and we obtained another 250,000 from Parks and Recreation towards that project, which a contract has not been signed yet. It's there, but it has not been signed. It's, I hate to say this, the state working in her ways in wonderful, slow waves, and applied for two other grants, each of 350,000, which is out there, and has not been turned down. We have spent considerable amount of money on engineering, all the plans have been drawn, all the specifications have been drawn, we're just waiting now for the final approval to go out to bid for that. I don't know if that answers your question, Pete, but, you know, basically, that's where it sits. There's been a lot of misconceptions out there, you had one yourself, that we weren't going to allow fishing on that, and that has not been true since day one. Only thing that was not going to be alloweded was boat docking and swimming for obvious reasons, and that's the only thing. I mean, you people can walk out there, can have picnics, you can have parties, you can do your, you know, as you're darn well pleased out there, but you're not going to dock a boat on the end of the structure view, and you're not going to swim because of the liability access to the village. But there's jutouts, so people can stand there and fish. You got the print in your office, or in your barber shop, and that's the artist's concept, that print, and it's in the store down there.
McDonough.
McDonough Store, and I don't think you can see it right now with the frost, but it's been there for a couple of months, the big artist's concept, and that's the final draft right there.
What would the total cost of that be?
1.6 million. Cost to the village is approximately 700,000?
Little over 600,000.
Little over 600,000, and most of that's in kind services. The putting Montgomery Street underground, that counts. We're going to do it anyway, so we get, we get credit for it. That's about 400 grand right there, somewhere in that figure. The lighting that we're going to put on... The lighting that we're going to put out there is the old street lighting that we had in the village that's going to be cut down and, and put out there. The, what else?
Are the signs going to be put up, George?
Yes, signs are already made, and here. And the signs are going to be put up. There's certain areas, there are like triangle boxes, that are here. That's all done. That was another 5,000. That's all completed.
But they're going, are they're going to be, I mean, the decision that you made last night, John said you made a decision about we weren't going to go any further until...
That's, you're spending money, expending money.
Right. But this, this, putting up these signs will be done?
Oh, yeah, they're here.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, they're here.
And they're really lovely. Historically, for people that haven't seen them, they're, they're going out in storefront, is that...
Yes.
I think somebody's...
I'll talk to the private space.
Who to do what?
Just to...
They're interpretive signs of Lake Champlain from that area, that were done by the Lakes of Locks people.
There, I believe, Donna, you contributed a lot of the information that ended up in the, in the signs.
They're beautiful.
Off, they're really, they're really something you would see in a national park. And that's what I, as soon as I saw them, I thought about Gettysburg and the Ludwig Interfus line that we have. But that, thank you for that information, Mr. McPhee, because that, that is good to know in terms of giving the board and, and all of us, the information is to, some flexibility there. Because I know certainly it's been everyone's impression that the waterfront efforts were really crucial in Ross's Point being designated a quality community. And I, no one wants to jeopardize our funds or, or that designation. Any other questions?
Anybody got any idea how we got that 200,000? Please tell me, because I'd like to know. I, I'm going to tell you, I got a phone call on a Friday from the county planning office saying, it would behoove you to be in Lake George Sunday morning at 10 o'clock. What for? Just be there. So I drove to Lake George. I had no idea what was going on. Had no idea. And I think most of you know Candy Luck. She works, Candace Luck, she works for the governor. She came up and she said, boy, are you going to be surprised. Yeah? And she said, just stand there, you're going to be surprised. All of a sudden, a helicopter landed, the governor got out, and he said, Ross's Point's getting 200,000 dollars, and I've said, nah. And that, that's as much as I knew.
I hope this man realizes how lucky he is, because no one ever called me like that. He'll pick up your 200,000 dollar check. Thank you very much. Any other hints, Mike?
Just one thing more, please, folks. And I've talked about this for a long time. I think this little community could put up a nice community swimming pool for our kids.
That's on the list. When we met with the, with the 12 agencies here, a year and a half ago, I put that on the list, right here.
Land is available, right?
Oh, yeah, it's here. And that's on the list that we submitted to the state. That, the railroad station, and a few other things. We have no place for a swimming pool, or swimming, for a beach, I'm sorry. I mean, everybody could come up to me, why don't you get a beach started? Well, fine, we'll do a beach, but show me where. And if somebody can show me a spot that we can put a beach, then we can start looking for funds to put one. But there's no spot. There's no place. The present beach that we had is owned by DEC, and they're not going to give it up. And I, I don't even want to go there with DEC, what I've been through in the last year and a half with them. Up at the other end of town, most of it's privately owned, and, and the other part is owned by, I think, the town. And they're certainly going to put it on Lake Street.
Plus its wetlands.
Yeah, it's wetlands. It's been designated as wetlands now.
Yes, Dave.
You know, it would be, that would be a very nice enhancement for the village, but there's already, you know, there's a lot of nice open space in the village, a couple of parks that are here, there's a really nice library. This facility, and I feel that they're being underused, and that there are also possible attractions. A lot of other communities have concerts in their parks during the summer and things like that, which is involved with people in the community. There can be more youth or, youth activities at this facility during the summers, during the winters as well, but that takes some promotion.
There are grants available through the decentralization programs in New York State Council on the Arts, which my agency puts out.
Excellent. I just put down Dave to improve the utilization of our existing facilities.
Yeah, if there were some things, like improvement of, you know, if you had concerts, these would be the things that would be attractions for people. And it would be attractions for people who are here on their boats during the summertime to come up off of, come up off of Marina's and to town.
Next round is August, come see me.
My, my stepdaughter lives in a suburb of Chicago, it's quite a wealthy suburb, Naperville. But honestly, the downtown of Naperville looks not significantly different than downtown Ross's Point, and they don't have anything like the lake. In fact, it was really laughable to us, they created a lake, they built a lake, so the kids could swim in the middle of this, this little community. But the downtown is teeming with people, night and day. People are, and there's, I wouldn't say there's great parking, it's just teeming with people, and they have a constant stream of activities that pull families into the downtown, you know, along the lines of what you're saying, the concerts and trying to use what we have. So I think that's definitely a, a good direction to pursue.
Places like Ellenberg, Ellenberg Town Hall Theater.
Saranac, the Hill, the concert.
Well, that's Hill and Hollow is a little different, but, I'm talking through the decentralization program, these can be funded. Here's Dave McPhee.
Other questions or comments? We're getting on toward eight, and I think people are probably tired at this point. One question I would like to pose to this group is, what might we do? What do you see as being productive for us in terms of outreach to the public? We're taping this, George very kindly agreed to set the camera up. This is going to Calvin for Calvin Vision. Calvin has a basketball game tonight.
Don't you tell anybody who taped this.
They're going to know, George, you're right next to the camera.
It's all right.
I think they're going to know.
I think you'll be a little shaky, I'm afraid.
So we're trying to hit people through Channel 24? Yeah, Channel 24. You know, obviously, the press, trying to get to the print media. What, what else can you suggest in terms of reaching people?
My point, Pete, should develop a survey and do a mailing to people who live in the...
In terms of outreach, mailing, survey. Anything else that you would suggest?
The village has a website?
Yeah, we're working at that. We have a web, present website, and we have, the village board has voted to, last month, to upgrade it, but it's going to be at least six months before it's brought up to the standards that we want it. And I can give you another insight. If you want to talk about economic development, that's maybe part of this. As, as all you know, that Ross's Point's a municipal, belongs to the Municipal Electric Association of the State of New York, and we're one of the 42 municipals in the state. Two years ago, I was put on the Economic Development Committee. And I said, fine. Two years, never had a meeting. And I said, what good is it? All of a sudden, I get a phone call to be in Albany in June, and we met with the Power Authority and Empire, Empire State Development in Albany. And as you know, the governor's had what they call a program, Power for Jobs, where if you brought 50 jobs into your community and they use X number of kilowatts of power, you could be allotted one-half of your power as, as hydro, which we all know is very lucrative, very cheap. That program was pretty tight. It had to be in industry. And a month ago, we announced that the governor signed a bill allowing our hydropower to 2000, to 2025 instead of 2013. Well, there was conditions, and that's why the Economic Development Committee got called. First of all, he wants economic development. So we have changed all those parameters. If you came into this community and you built a shopping center, and you hired 50 people and you exchanged number of power, you're now entitled to some of that hydro. Right? You apply for it. Or you build a hotel or a motel. We opened that up and expanded it. And one of the things, I sat there and I said, there's one thing that's sad here. We are not marketed. The Village of Ross's Point is not marketed. The Champlain Development Corporation has yet to bring an industry into the Village of Ross's Point of any kind. I said, I asked the rest of them on the committee, what was theirs? Same thing. We're Municipal Electric. We have, you know, Salve, Groton, Fairport, you know, go right down the list. We're not marketed. So I said, well, let's, we got the Empire, Empire State Development Corporation here, and we all got websites, and the Power Authority's got a website. And I said, and Municipal Electric has got a, why don't we just link them all together and have the Empire State Development Corporation start marketing Municipal Power? And that you will see by the end of this year. We are going to market it ourselves, and to heck, I'm sorry, with Champlain Development Corporation and the rest of them, because they're not doing anything for us. So, and it's not just going to be in the state. It's international. So it was a very positive thing that came out of it. So there's, there's something that, you know, you can look forward to.
And that's definitely something we want to call to the consultant's attention, is our special status as a municipal electric community. And it's tremendously advantaged in a lot of ways, a lot of resources, resources to tie into. Well, if you, if you did want to volunteer, I think the signed sheet has landed right there. Thank you. So please feel free to let us know before you leave. Thank you again for coming and coming out on this night. You can be a really important part in this process. I know that sounds really corny, but just by talking to people. I mean, let's face it, there aren't that many people in this village, and there probably aren't a lot of people that are totally out of the sphere of the people in this room. If we can get out there and explain to people what this is and what it isn't, you know, that, that it's not a big commitment to spend millions of dollars, that it's not a guarantee of the perfect industry or the beautiful downtown, but that it's a really important process, and that their voices need to be heard, I think we can, we can cover a lot of ground just by doing that. And so, thank you again for coming. Any last comments from the committee or the board?
Doesn't the village own that land where the, where the band concert, where the band stands at?
Yes.
And then there's the playground?
We own all of that.
And then it goes right down to Montgomery Street? There's a sort of a park there?
It goes down, and then it cuts across, and then down to Montgomery Street.
Yeah, and there's a sort of a park, isn't that where the canyon is?
No, that's where the tank is.
Yeah. Well, wouldn't that be something to do more with?
Ideal place for a swimming pool. Ideal place for a swimming pool.
Am I correct in calling that, it would be village-owned lakefront? Is that, is that right?
No, no, because the other side, yes, it is. The other side of that street, we own a piece of that property.
That's the boat dock.
Yeah, there, there used to be a boat launch there, right next to Lighthouse Marina, that was owned by the village.
Okay. So even if it's not exactly on the lake, it's lake view, it wants access.
See, now, one of the things with that, with the lake, with the boardwalk, is to come across on the lakeside with a sidewalk, and come right across where the sports is, and come right across, and then tie into the park, so that they have access to the bathrooms and the park. That was one of the things. I don't know where that, part of that stands at, at this point, because I know we, we made some changes and we cut it off.
That's certainly, you know, trying to link all of that. Fantastic idea to utilize that. Thank you so much for coming. Please come back, come back. For the next meeting, we really appreciate you being here.
On behalf of the villagers, I'd like to thank Melissa for sort of heading this up, and you folks for turning out, because it's not often we get a crowd like this. This, it seems good.